So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it. So my thing is you're in the middle of it.
What's that? They don't bring pens up anymore. Hey Brad.
I hear it. We'll share it.
You need one, I could ask if you want.
This is what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, that's right. They used to put the paper and the pens out. Cut back in a year.
You might have to pull it.
People here, bicycle, other. We have a couple of conversations.
There's your daughter.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. The gal she hit was very, very nice. We called on Paul Trenton, 79th over there. We tried to call. They didn't show up, so, yeah.
Alexa likes to hit things in our parking lot, you know, other cars in the parking lot. That's been her favorite. She's amazing. She's, you know, trying to pull it and doesn't.
Stand for pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand as one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome to the July 16th Fisher City Council meeting. Any announcements? I didn't have any up here. Any announcements from council? All right, any proclamations, no proclamations, presentations? Selena, do you have an update from the finance committee?
I do have.
We usually don't get here that quick, so it's all right. Take your time.
Yeah, I just said, hey, I'm just a bit. I'm not sure if here it is. Thank you. The finance committee met on July 11th. The macro markets, as I gave an extensive report last month, the outlook pretty much remains the same in terms of financing costs are expected to increase for municipalities. Resolutions, all the resolutions on the agenda passed the finance committee with favorable recommendations. These are needed to complete the Allisonville Road project. There were other items discussed. The Caffer has been sent to the finance committee for review from the controller and we're in the process of reviewing. In September, BKD and UMBAC will be at the finance committee meeting to discuss the audit. The situation update regarding, a situation update regarding the stormwater services was presented to the committee. This was passed by the Board of Works with favorable recommendations. Given that will be, that there will be a structural defect next year and that we are reacting to problems rather than preventing them, the finance committee voted in favor of the stormwater fee adjustments. The council will be receiving more information about this from the administration. The controller and the committee discussed the possibility of a bond bank as a cost savings for issuing bonds. After reviewing and discussing, all agreed that this would be more labor intensive and at a greater expense to the community. At this time, it is not recommended.
Thank you, councilwoman Solar. Moving on to consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Pete, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. On to R 071618.
Hello, for the record, Lisa Bradford, city controller. If I could, I will talk about items seven, eight, and nine together. They're all related. And then I'll step aside so we can have the public hearing separately and vote on them separately. But as was mentioned in the finance committee report, when preparing and adopting the 2018 budget, we included costs to improve 126th and Allisonville Road and 131st and Allisonville Road. However, that budget was just to approve the intersections and post-budget approval, the discussions got a little more in-depth and the project in its scope changed. So now we will be widening Allisonville Road from River Glen to 131st Street. And so these additional appropriations are needed to cover that cost. Obviously, this is all cash funding, so we don't want to issue any debt to complete these road projects. And we'd like to continue with the timeline that we currently have. So when State Road 37 construction begins, Allisonville Road could be a good alternate route for people.
Okay. And that's cover seven, eight, and nine?
Yes, so, seven, eight, nine, yes.
All right, so we'll go ahead with item seven, public hearing. Open up for public hearing.
Yeah.
And did you have, I'm sorry.
No, I didn't know if John.
Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and do the public hearing. So open up for public hearing. Any of those wishing to speak on this item, please step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak? All right, as no one's approaching, I'll close the public hearing for R 071618. John, any questions?
Lisa, I have a couple of questions regarding that project in particular. Maybe kind of talk on a more macro level about some of the road projects. How much is the total cost of that project that we're covering?
I believe the total cost of the project, and this includes the cost that will be paid by NDOT because we do have a match for this. So I believe the total cost of the construction project, and don't quote me, is probably seven, in the seven to nine million dollar range on the total.
So we've got a project where, and if anyone's familiar with that area over in Allisonville Road, going from two lanes, four lanes down to two lanes through there is obviously a pretty tough stretch. We're going to make that four lanes. All I know that's about, he said, again, how much is again, just one?
It's probably between seven and nine, like I said.
Seven, nine million dollars, and we've got, we've got matching from the state.
The state, yes.
Then we have federal funds as well coming along. So we're in all-in Fishers for how much for this?
For this, for the additional appropriations, we're in about two, about 2.6 million, $3 million is what we're. But we're getting a very substantial asset with this additional cost at, you know, a very discounted price due to the matching that we've got federally and state.
So to be clear, we're doing an $8 million project with $2 million of our own cash and no debt whatsoever.
Right.
Okay, just trying to be clear kind of.
Yes.
And if everyone knows our senior engineer Jeff Hill, he's outstanding. Every good chance shake his hand, he's gotten a lot of money for us from the federal government. And we've done, he's gotten millions of dollars for our community. So just want to make clear, we talked about that in the budget, may ask me, I want to make sure the public was aware that we're doing this very conservatively, very fiscally responsibly, and we're not incurring any debt.
No, this is obviously a very high-cost road project that we are getting at a fraction of the cost with the matches that we're getting from NDOT and federally.
Thank you, Lisa.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by John. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to R 071618A. I'll open this up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. See no one stepping forward, I'll close the public hearing on that. Do I have any questions or comments from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. On to R 071618B. I will open that up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. No one stepping forward, I'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Pete, second by Selena. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on, thank you. Moving on to 071618, 2018 salary ordinance amendment.
For the record, Lisa Bradford, city controller. I'm filling in today for HR director. The amendment before you is an amendment to the salary ordinance. This is not adding an additional position, but this is to change a job title in the salary ordinance from Assistant Director of Fleet to Fleet Director. If you have no questions, I'd just ask that we suspend the rules and do first, second, and third reading.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass the first reading.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by John, second by Pete. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Selena. All those in favor? Oh, she said, I'm sorry, she did, yeah, she did, yeah. Motion, any, I'm sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to 071618C.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. The next item is the final reading on the annexation of Geis Manor, which is a proposed 47-lot subdivision. It's located on the northeast corner of 113th Street and Florida Road.
I'll make a motion to approve unless there's any questions.
Any questions? No, okay. Motion by Pete, second by Selena. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to 071618D.
Again, I'm Megan Schaefer with the Planning and Zoning Department. This next item is for a rezone from employment node to a planned unit development commercial for Riverview Health Facility, which is an emergency and urgent care medical facility. The property is located on the northwest corner of 116th Street and Exit 5 Parkway, which is just east of Top Golf, identified here. It's going to be roughly a 10,000-square-foot medical facility located centrally on the lot. There will be parking on the sides and in the front along 116th Street. The entrance will face 116th Street and the emergency vehicle pickup will be located on the north of the property. There is a sculpture garden with landscaping and seating being proposed on the west side. That's to accommodate the city's new open space standards. Vehicular access will be provided by one drive off the northern street and one drive off the western street, both of which have been approved by the city's engineering department. The proposed building was approved by the PUD committee back in May and incorporates a mix of materials into the design. This is the view from 116th Street shown here. The petitioner has been working with staff to incorporate projections such as awnings and bump outs on all four wall planes to help with building massing. And all rooftop mechanical units will be screened with a pre-finished metal roof. So the PUD also incorporates an alternative landscaping plan into the ordinance. The foundation and parking lot landscaping exceed the UDO requirements. And then, as mentioned, the sculpture garden will feature a public art sculpture with a mix of trees, shrubs, and other plantings. There's an existing utility easement along 116th Street, which prevents the planting of trees along this frontage. But the petitioner has agreed to mounding and shrubs to screen the parking lot, and this mounding is similar to the Delaware Commons Development to the east to keep a consistent look down 116th Street. So this request is compatible with the UDO and the comprehensive plan. Staff believes that it's compatible with the surrounding uses as well and recommends approval. Petitioner is here to speak, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have as well.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner in the law firm of Fagery Baker Daniels and a resident here in the city of Fishers. I'm pleased to be here representing Riverview Health and their team before you tonight. With me from the Riverview team is the Riverview Health CEO and President Seth Warren is here. And then also from Equity LLC, the developer, Anthony Zares here, if you have any questions for us. This project has been, we've worked very closely with the development department staff, and we appreciate Megan and Tony's guidance throughout the process. The planning commission was a unanimous favorable recommendation. There was no remonstrance, there was staff support for that. And also at the PUD committee, also there was unanimous favorable recommendation for the design of the project. I did want to point out the structure of how the project and the ownership and how that's working, just so you understand that. So Sunbeam currently owns the property and will continue to own the real estate. There'll be a ground lease to Equity LLC, which is a for-profit entity, and then that entity will be the one that will build the building on the ground-leased land. And then a for-profit joint venture between Intuitive Health and Riverview Health will combine as a for-profit entity to be the operator for this. I know that there had been some questions about the I-69 overlay, and so I just wanted to be able to explain that we talked, that came up several months ago with the staff, and we talked through how the structure was and how that wasn't a concern. That's why you didn't see any amendment or modification in the PUD ordinance for that. With that, I want to introduce Seth Warren, who's the CEO for Riverview, just to give you a three-minute overview and open up for any questions so you can understand kind of what's different about this and why they're so excited to be a new member here.
Thank you. Again, my name is Seth Warren, President and CEO of Riverview Health, which is the county hospital. I wanted to explain this to you because it is a little bit different. I think a lot of people are aware of all the urgent cares in the marketplace and the emergency rooms in the marketplace. This is a hybrid model. Very often, we expect consumers to try to determine where they should be going for their health care. And very often, you don't know the seriousness of the disease or injury that you may have, and so you're trying to choose amongst Minute Clinic and urgent care, microhospital, hospital. What this is, is this is staffed by emergency room physicians, but we will provide the appropriate level of care. If you come in and it's an urgent need, you'll be seen by an emergency room physician and billed for an urgent care visit. If it's emergent need, you're going to be, also be seen by an emergency room physician but billed for an emergency room visit. People ask about those microhospitals, what they are. They're essentially freestanding emergency rooms with inpatient beds. But if you do go there with a minor injury or illness, you are getting billed for an emergency room visit, same as you would a larger hospital. So we are taking the guessing work out of the patient's decision-making process where you just have to go and present, and we'll figure out how sick or injured you are and bill you accordingly. And we are doing several of these in the larger marketplace. But the first one we will be doing is at our Westfield Hospital that's under construction. We'll have a similar hybrid model, but then we will have these freestanding facilities. These freestanding facilities will necessitate, you know, transfer to a larger hospital if there is something of, you know, greater need. But the vast majority of what people need health care for will be able to be treated and discharged from this facility. The location, what we look for is highly visible, accessible facility and locations so that the public knows where they are and how to get to them in the emergent or urgent situation. So that's the desire for it to be in this location. With that, I have to answer any questions.
Yeah, maybe, maybe a couple for me, and I apologize, I missed that planning commission meeting. It's my one meeting per month that I miss. So the questions I have is, you're showing you have a ambulance bay?
Yes.
That's coming in there? Scott, we currently have an ambulance base staff by our fireman out of IU Health?
Correct.
Okay, so talk to me about how that all works together, and we're not at crosshairs here about who's going where and, you know, where we're going to deliver somebody. I want certainly the public to know, you know, if there's a, there's a motor vehicle accident, are they going to show up at your doorstep?
Unlikely. I mean, if they're, if it's the nearest place and it's a life and death situation, they may, but for the most part, the ambulance traffic is going to be outbound from our facility. So it will be there for transfer to, you know, a trauma center or.
Acute center.
Acute center. If someone comes in with chest pain, turns out to be a heart attack, they'd be transferred out of that facility. We really won't be receiving ambulances unless it's a very, excuse me, unusual situation.
So is it mostly, is it mostly in urgent care or is it mostly emergency medicine?
It's, it's combination, but most of what's seen is urgent care. I mean, in any given emergency room, most of what comes in our doors, whether it be Riverview or any other healthcare provider, most of what comes in is urgent care. People don't know, and so they end up getting billed again for low-level emergency care. So, you know, the vast majority, about 70% of what is seen in a typical emergency room could be treated in emergency, in an urgent care center. So the majority of it will be urgent care.
Right. Yeah, that much I agree with. I just want to make sure that the public understands that you all of a sudden you're having chest pains, you're running down the road, if you're going there, you're probably getting transported somewhere.
Right.
Right, for the most part.
Right.
I could say every time. Not that you can't get some level of service there.
Right, again, there, there will be ER physicians, and so you're not, it's, and this is not a knock on nurse practitioners or family practice physicians, they're just not trained to deal with those emergent situations where ER physicians are. So if you go in there with chest pains, you're going to get treated the same way you would in an emergency room at any other hospital.
All right, fair enough.
How many of these hybrid offices or, you know, facilities, there we go, thank you, do you have?
Currently, we, we do not have any. The, our Westfield will be a hybrid model. It's a little different because it's not freestanding. That's going to be a separate hospital, so that's going to be the first one to open up in about a month and a half. And, but there will be four of these facilities here in the greater Hamilton County market.
Any other questions, comments?
Just the other comment I have for the two other guys who are in planning commission. Any other comments from planning commission at all on this?
I think the planning commission was very complimentary of the design. Really, we appreciated what you guys tried to do with the orientation of the building, material mix, and, you know, I think people were very pleased with that.
Okay.
In the form of 116, the Top Golf can't get over it.
You may have a few people come from Top Golf, you know, to.
Yes.
Pay for services.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Tony blackens the screens, ready for a dramatic presentation, I think.
Hit the wrong button.
Yeah, start the timer.
Tony Begado, Director of Planning and Zoning. This item before you is an annexation request that came through because of a variance in Fall Creek Township area. Just, again, kind of briefly, high level, that we have a policy in our departments since I've been here to really try to push annexation where possible. And on variances, when the continuity requirements are there, we're requesting them. So this is Fall Creek Township property. They requested a variance to put a garage in the front yard setback, which needed the variance, and the BZA approved it. So as part of the commitment of the variance, we requested them to annex since they met the continuity requirements. So this is here for introduction and first and second reading.
Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, but you also need a public hearing, so.
Oh, we need, okay. Open it up.
That annexation law, they're always getting.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Well, go ahead and open up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. See no one stepping forward, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any motion?
And Rich had already gave the first reading.
Or questions or first reading, all right, all right, thank you. Moving on to 071618F.
Good evening, Tony Begato, again, Director of Planning and Zoning. This item before you is the adoption of the city's new UDO, which is known as our Unified Development Ordinance. Just kind of high level, again, in 2016, we approved the City Fishers 2040 Comprehensive Plan. As part of implementing that plan was to look at updating our UDO, mainly to look at where we can incorporate new policies and standards to increase the high-level standard we're looking for in new development, as well as maintain and preserve the land that's been developed in Fishers. Along with the adoption is that the current code was written in 2005, and it's, it's pretty cumbersome, a little bit outdated, I'd say, in the format, and there was some 2015 amendments that was codified, but that was just basically bringing all the changes over that tenure period into the code. But what we work with today is a 494-page document of over 200,000 words. Me and my team worked over the last 10 months in writing it in-house, and have got it down to over, just about 112,000 words. So it's a very, a lot more organized and streamlined. So a lot of the standards are still there today, probably 98% of what are already in place. There will be some new standards that we've talked through the council, through various committees and commissions, and presented to you last month just to show you those changes as part of further implementation of the Fishers 2040 Plan. So here, just to show you an example, this is a current code today for our height standards. It's under Chapter 5, and for example, this is how it looks today. So Article, it's now Article 6 is our development standards, but it shows a lot more graphics and hopefully easier to read than the one on the left. So that's the high-level changes to the code. Now for some of the change recommendations and standards in land use, which are not significant for this kind of code update, but have, do need some discussion. So the first one is incorporating a special exception process into our land use table. That is not in the city process today. This requires some of these uses in the future to go to BZA. That gives the city a little more control over those uses and whether or not they should be on a property where they're being proposed. One of them is institutional uses. So today, schools, churches, or places of worship, and major utilities are typically allowed by right, and the city has no control over the land use. Where we do have control is over some of the standards, like the setbacks, the height, and the impervious surface area. Now typically what happens, churches will come in and they're allowed by right, so we can't deny the use, but then they'll need a variance for the parking lot because for a residential zone, with a church having a parking lot or a school having a parking lot, that's not going to meet 35%. So one of the changes included, in lieu of making this now a BZA approval and going through a public hearing and having more control on the land use, we're going to give them the 75% of impervious surface to accommodate the parking area. Now churches and schools still, and utilities are required to have buffer areas of landscaping, a minimum of 30 feet, which a home wouldn't be required. So we're not trying to diminish the amount of green space, we're just really trying to accommodate a standard that needs to be addressed and changed as part of the code. The other change would then be, short-term rentals would also be introduced as a, now a special exception, which is consistent with state law. So the law that was approved in Indiana this year says that if you're a homeowner and you live in your home and you want to do a short-term rental, which is defined by 30 days or less, and you want to post it on Airbnb, and you live in that home, you're allowed to do it by right. The city has no authority to tell you no or otherwise. However, if you're an investment owner, and so you live in a different state or even a different city or a different property in the city limits, and you want to buy a house that you don't live in and you want to put that on Airbnb for 30-day rentals, we have the ability to take that through the BZA as a special, special exception. Now, the thought process behind that is to treat it like a variance, where we would go through the BZA and have finding of facts based on a case-by-case basis, and usually treat it as an enforcement mechanism. So if we have a property where maybe we know we're having complaints, or if an investment property comes to us ahead of time, we can take them through the process. But really, we're looking at it more as an enforcement of a nuisance issue than an active enforcement by the city. Then the one change in commercial we are looking to address with this code is auto sales limited in C3. Today, they're allowed by right, so any property zone C3 on 116th Street, Allisonville Road, 96th Street, those properties can be turned into auto sales. And again, that to me is not the most compatible use, sometimes next to residential, so we're asking for that to be removed as part of a approved use, and it would be a limited, which would allow an office sale component inside a building, but basically no parking lot of cars. What that does is there are five businesses today that are zone C3, three of them right along Allisonville Road, and two on either side of I-69. I've sent a letter to those property owners, let them know they would be grandfathered in. That allows them to expand up to 20% one time, and also if the use or the property is ever sold, they have six months to keep that business active and it's still allowed to remain. So I haven't received any negative comments, just some general conversations about how grandfathering works. And I think, again, in the city's best, long-term interest, it's still the best thing to do is to remove it today. So these are the general locations, zone C3 today for those properties. Then for neighborhood standards, what we looked at talking about is introducing median requirements at entrances to subdivisions. That would be triggered for a subdivision that's 51 lots or more, based on the fact that the fire marshal requires secondary entrances for 51-lot subdivisions, so this would be like a primary entrance and wouldn't be applied to like a four-lot subdivision where it wouldn't make sense. Then we're looking at a larger planting strip because we've ran into conflict between street trees and utilities and the sidewalk within a five-foot strip area today. There's a lot of conflict, so now we're increasing that to eight feet, and that's consistent with engineers' draft construction specs for local streets. And then street appearance is one of the standards. We talked through our residential committee last year, and this is about creating a better street presence for the homes in the neighborhood, and this would require either the garage to be set back four feet from the front of the home, or you can do a porch in lieu of that requirement. So we're not trying to force one specific design, we've got some variety, but we want a better street appeal. And then connectivity would require some block length requirements where you have to have a certain length to streets, and then you can incorporate sidewalks in between the streets or pedestrian trails to lengthen those sidewalks for pedestrian connectivity is all that, and well, as well as putting connectivity through roundabouts to any other streets or common areas where there's connectivity. Then the architectural standards was probably the biggest change, which we're through Baggy Review. No more point system is what we've been working with today. It's, it's, it's not very staff-friendly, in our opinion. So the new standards focus on more of like an architectural design guideline where we use a lot of photos and highlight, like this example from Beazer Homes in the code with their approval, to show what elements meet the standards of the code. We're looking at cohesive design, building scale, form and function, architectural elements and material. One of the things we did talk about, again, here's the current code, it reads today, and then here's a new standard, so more tables and images to kind of highlight the user-friendliness of that. With the work with Baggy, you know, we received some concerns. Initially, we were recommending prohibition of vinyl. However, I think talking through that with, with Baggy and as well as looking at state legislation, you know, we're recommending now an alternative design for vinyl for straight zoning approvals. PUDs can still go through the PUD Committee, and it would be up to the PUD Committee and the council to allow vinyl on a case-by-case basis in a PUD. But for straight zoning, we came up with an approach to allow for thicker, require thicker vinyl gauge at .052, enhanced entry trim features, so that means a decorative trim around your front door. And then if you're going to have masonry, we're requiring a 30% masonry at the water table line, just like in this image here. That would show the, try to alleviate any concerns between vinyl being next to mulch and any fire concerns we've had from our fire department. And then as well as they need architectural features that are required in the code. So here, they conclude a front porch with some thick columns and a color change. That's part of some of the requirements in the new code. So here's an example where a vinyl home actually under straight zoning could be approved, and I think would be architecturally compatible with what our design standard is in the new code. So with that, staff's open to any questions. Planning Commission did review this last week, so I wasn't able to cover it in the report. We did get unanimous support, and have had really good positive feedback from the community so far, so any questions for staff?
Before anybody asks questions, good job. I mean, just got to work it thorough. It's very thorough. It's a huge packet, and a lot of, a lot of work's gone behind that, so.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from council?
Just a couple of things. Uh, discussing the planning, there's some concerns with the word preservation and conservation. And Tony's made a commitment after we pass it that he will go back and revisit that. And we're having tremendous problems with Rick Paul with the word conservation, preservation, what people think they can and can't do. And his department's out there a lot, trying to stop people from doing what they think they can do. Unfortunately, the UDO has a definition, and then every developer that comes in with their PUD reifying, so they've got 30 different versions of what each of those two words mean. So I think it's important that he spends the time to work with everybody concerned and get two definitions down. That goes into UDO, and not, not, not allow any developer to redefine those two definitions into PUD. So Tony's committed to do that, and hopefully resolve some of the problems in the future. The other thing that I've asked is Carmel has come up with a special HOA for his, or started through their planning commission. And Tony also has committed, assumes Carmel finishes there, that I've asked that that be introduced in Fishers, similar to what Carmel's been asking. Thank you.
Thanks. Brad, any other?
I was just going to add, I mean, I can't imagine the amount of work that Tony and staff, Leah, the mayor, put into this. I mean, it is tremendous, and, and really appreciate her for what you did. But I, I know there were a couple of things that came up at the planning commission. I just want to make sure that the public understands and appreciates, because I think probably a number of us have had at least some level of questioning about a, a few of the special exceptions that are now required. Personally, I, I think we all were supportive at the planning commission, and I think the reasons why make complete sense. It's, it's really looking at things practically, but it's worth noting, and I just want to make sure that maybe at this point, it's, the, the public appreciates that. A couple of things, for instance, the, the church being pulled out of now the R2 zoning and requiring a special exception just seems to make sense because I think in so many cases, you know, the, the location is, it's, it's a factor, and, you know, I think that this allows for a little more closely, a little closer review of, of where that is. The second thing, which I think a number of people questioned, were the limit of the 35% impervious surface. At least, I've probably talked to two or three people, and I think after they understood and appreciated, that, that was driven by the fact that churches could go into the R2 zoning, which then had that 35% limit, but the practical side was nearly every church, at least my understanding, that ever came in, then had to go seek a variance to get the, and it's not just churches, it's the schools and special institutional kind of uses, because of the requirement for parking and other things. It was just almost impossible to ever hit that unless you had some crazy site. But I think, again, that, that speaks to the, the more practical nature of really what occurred. And the last thing I think Steve Harden brought up is just allowing for there to be a transition period for certain uses, like churches, and I think that was incorporated. So if you don't mind, for the public's benefit, just clarifying that those have now been incorporated. I think we at the planning commission approved those just as kind of a rider or something, as I recall, and I just, I, I want to verify that that's included in the ordinance.
Yeah, so Chapter 1, I believe it's 1.3, was, a section was added under the transition ordinance to allow a six-month period where staff will work with any churches that already own property or even the school that owns property, where they could be grandfathered in, to not go through a special exception because they bought land under different rules, and now we're changing the rules on them. So I think it's fair to give them a six-month window for grandfathering to get approval to avoid that BZA. But then after that period, if nobody came in, an old land, or they're a new owner after the public hearing date last week, it would, any new church would go through a BZA approval. In addition, like you said, yeah, parking lots are part of those uses, but they would never comply with the residential standard because that's built for a home. That standard's meant for the homes, not, not necessarily the churches. So we looked at what most parking lots are right around 65% to 75% impervious surface. Again, they still have to meet all the runoff ordinances and all our stormwater engineering, and they have to have detention, so it doesn't allow them to, you know, just flood the streets because they have more impervious. They have to meet all our requirements. But the standard is usually for the parking lot and the building, they're going to have more impervious service than a single-family home, so that was a, to me, a consistent change. In addition to, they go to BZA anyways now, and they're going to give us site plans showing what the parking lot is, so those standards are going to be part of the approval on the front end. And then secondly, yeah, like you said, then we addressed, we also addressed, I didn't mention, the shade trees were brought up by Brad Dreamer, so we've clarified language in there to make sure it was required today. The code says one for every 40 feet, and now it's just one per lot. Actually, I changed it to one per frontage based on some discussion so that a corner lot could have two, and then cross-referenced with our subdivision standard to make sure that's consistent in there today. So those, again, were just things that were done at the public hearing process through the public comment, like the Baggy changes as well, that we were done more on the front end.
Yep. Again, I just wanted to thank Tony and his team for doing that. I mean, we were a microscopic part of that, and it was an immense amount of work, and I think you guys did banner work, as you guys always do, so I appreciate that. There's no other comments or questions. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve.
And motion by Pete, second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, Tony. Moving on, moving on to 052118E.
Good evening, Council. Lindsey Bennett, Assistant City Attorney. I am here for the third reading of the bicycle ordinance. This third reading just simply removes the language regarding helmets and reflective material. I'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions or comments from council?
Is the helmet not in the order?
Right, so that has been removed.
Yeah, it's on the, if you'll look at the red line, under 73.11C. Yeah, it's been removed. It's been...
I think all of it. We got a lot of emails. Personally, I think it shouldn't be imperating on adults who choose enough opportunity. We had somebody who was, who was learning on a bicycle, here in Fishers, unfortunately. I had to be checking out something. The other day, me and Scott, my little girl, about six years old, fell on her bicycle, scratched and cut herself up, but she had helmet. And I got to work with that. That's just my personal feeling, but if you're not quite okay with your...
Well, I, I view it as a parental responsibility. I mean, in, in so many of our children's activities, I mean, I think it's kind of our responsibility. I think the enforcement challenge is the biggest, I mean, complaint or objection that I heard, and, and I really think it's, it's nearly impossible to enforce. So that, to me, I mean, I think whatever our children do, it, it's our responsibility to see that they do it safely. So I, that's the way I view it.
And I, I agree, Rich. I mean, you know, as, the, the state doesn't have any laws regulating that for motorcycles. I, I view this as, that's a state law, as far as I'm concerned. If they want to mandate helmet use for all people riding bicycles around the state of Indiana, then I think we need to go talk to legislators. I am also not for the ordinance in, in its current variety. I just think it's massively unenforceable, and I don't see a point in putting it in other ordinance that can't be enforced, so I'm going to be a no.
Wasn't the reason why we did this is because there was a need to a certain degree? I mean, I think that's why the city was working on something, right? To try to enforce at least some part of bicycle safety?
The bicycle, bicycle community did reach out to us about the three-foot safe passing ordinance, and, and that kind of morphed into rights and responsibilities of both parties just to set those expectations out.
I think that, that was my question, the basis of where, the genesis of this, because if it branched out into other things, I would hate to kill the genesis of it. What was the heart behind it or the motive behind it because of other ancillary items that, yes, it's great to wear a helmet. I make my kids do that. They, they throw fits, but for me to say, you have to do that with your kids, or you have to, I have, I do have an issue with that. But, so, but, you know, that's where I think we get to the core of it and then decide whether somebody's, you know, whether constituents here are, I mean, the constituents like that, whether the councilors are in agreement with that, that's, that's the kind of thing we want to...
So Council President Zimmerman, I don't want to venture too far into legislative intent here, but I think the idea was originally, the cycling community had brought this idea to our attention, and as cycling has grown in popularity, we have more and more interaction between vehicle and cyclist. And to codify in our books what those interactions will look like and what the responsibilities are to each party in terms of their interaction with each other on the road was the original intent.
Okay.
I think it then kind of scope creep got into this idea of, well, should we be legislating not only your responsibility in interacting with others on the road, but what is your responsibility to your own safety or your children's safety? And this is where I think it got into a bigger, broader public policy conversation. The original intent was, hey, we've got a lot of bicyclists out on the road, we have a lot of vehicles out on the road, we should really codify what that relationship looks like in the instance that, and I think Assistant Chief Gephardt's here tonight from the Police Department, I think from an enforcement standpoint, we look at this from more of a, if there's a blatant issue, if there's a point of conflict, if there's things of that nature, I don't know that this is something that we're gonna be out proactively patrolling and trying to identify, but rather let's articulate what the rules and responsibilities are on the road today as these two different types of transportation interact with one another.
And I agree with the interaction piece. I think that's important to try to codify. However, my question would be, because I'm not familiar with it, so this is out of coming from ignorance here, I don't know what that is with regard to motorcycles. Is this similar to like a motorcycle? Are they allowed to weave around cars and is a car supposed to be at a safe distance? A vehicle's supposed to be at a safe distance from that? Because it seems similar, you know, from reading it from someone that doesn't ride a motorcycle, I don't know. You know, or are we branching off into something that then has a domino effect? I think even Pete is alluding to where we're creating layers that maybe even go beyond what a motorcycle, motorcycle safety would be or laws. So I don't, you know, I don't have the answer to that.
I'm not aware of the motorcycle laws. I don't ride and so I don't, I don't know. It's not something that I've had, have ever researched. With regard to the bicycle laws, though, there is a section in Indiana code that deals with bicycles. It does not have much in it. So because it doesn't have much in it, that gives us a little bit of latitude to make those extra rules, to create those extra responsibilities. I have talked extensively with Chief Thompson about this and enforcement and he was advocating for a more balanced approach rather than just putting all of the onus on the motorists. He felt that, you know, bicyclists should have some responsibilities and rights too. So that's what we've tried to do, is just create that balance so we're not coming down heavy-handed on motorists necessarily and then just keeping everybody safe.
I think one thing that does actually help us is from time to time, we will get complaints about bicyclists being on our roads. Why are these guys on our roads? They're slow, we shouldn't have to deal with them. I think by articulating that they do have the legal right to be on the road and here are the, to our, to the statement earlier about a balanced approach, I think Lindsey's right, that we really did try to identify that. You both have legal right to the roads, but here's what you have to do in order to be on that road. These are your responsibilities. As for the motorcycle, I don't know, Assistant Chief Gephardt, if you know of any specific laws associated with that and how that differentiates from a bicycle.
And I hope you understand, I'm not trying to go down a rabbit hole with this. I really am not. I just want to make sure there's no unintended consequences because I agree with the basis of this, taking out the couple of the items that we've taken, removed. I just want to make sure there's not something that then are gonna come back, you know, a month later and now we've done something that is impacting others in a negative way, so...
So I heard a couple of things. I just want to clarify what I'm answering here. Are you asking me whether the motorcycle has to obey the same rights as an automobile in terms of when it goes around bikes? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, yeah, in the safe distance language that's in here.
They have to obey that ordinance, just like an automobile would. So they gotta keep that distance in mind.
Okay.
If that morphs into a discussion about whether we, for the record, Ed Gephardt's Assistant Chief of Police, let the record reflect. You know, I am a great advocate of what's trying to be done here in terms of safety and awareness and getting out in front of it and maybe grabbing it as a city and trying to make it more of a city function and a parental function than an actual ordinance against on the helmet side. So I stand with Chief Thompson and his opinion that laying this ordinance down would be tough for us to enforce on the law enforcement side in two facets. One is if you age, if you age it, whether it's an adult or a kid, that's gonna be a lot of police contacting a lot of people with a lot of different helmets on and that's gonna raise a whole different, I think, proportion of problems as well, proportion of problems as well. But the other, on our side, discretion rides with our officers. That's what enables them to have decision-making on scenes. A lot of them are motorcycle enthusiasts and, you know, if the state had laws that had, you know, you must wear a helmet with a motorcycle on the bike, you know, I could see the officers getting more on board, but I just don't, they'll use discretion to not enforce this ordinance because of the state's wide view on it as it is, as it lies now. And that's both the way Chief and I feel, but we're on board as a police department to help in any kind of city initiative that we'd like to start to help keep our youth safe, surely.
Could we, maybe if the rest of the council agrees, add something that just saying we highly advise or recommend that helmets be worn when riding a bike, especially for children under 18 or something? You're not, you're not mandating it, but you're encouraging residents to, you know, utilize helmets.
Yeah, I think that...
I mean, I think that's a smart thing to do, but we're not mandating it, but just at least, I think it's smart just to maybe have people just think about that.
I, I think that we're probably, and I don't want to misspeak or be conflicted, but I think we're, we would do better by some sort of weekly initiative of year of bicycle safety and take it on as a city together as a collective goal. I think when you start to put ordinances into recommendations and asterisks, I think you start to get yourself in a little bit of a problem area there. So, you know, we do great things in the city where we, we put stuff at the forefront, you know, Mental Health and Disabilities Week that really bring a lot of notoriety to the city of Fishers. I don't think this endeavor would be any different than any of those and it might even be more special to some of our parents that are out there who we're trying to reach because we're not really focused on the kids so much as we're focused on the adults of saying, hey, put a helmet on, right? I think, I think it'd be a good initiative.
I'm gonna, I said a holiday in last night, I'm gonna play lawyer for a second. Chris loves when I do this. I would stay away from kind of suggestive recommendations in code. I mean, it's either the law or it's not. You don't really want to leave these kind of open-ended recommendations that just leave a lawyer's paradise to legislate or to litigate against. I agree with Captain Gephardt, if this is, or Assistant Chief, sorry, it's been a while. If we want to make this a public push, then let's put our passion and attention to it. I mean, it gets buried in code tonight. I doubt the vast majority of Fishers residents are gonna be reviewing Code 32-6-C and go, whoa, I should put a helmet on. I think we should, you know, that's something that's more of a public awareness campaign.
Yeah, I think we need to look at something that's, you know, let's do something that's impactful. To me, this, a lot of this is just, it's common sense. If you have a child riding a bicycle, they should be wearing a helmet. Adult riding a bicycle should be wearing a helmet. One of my partners in my CPA firm, he's an avid motorcycle rider and he does not wear a helmet and that's his choice. But I think there's some, some things from a, and there's some reasons. I think motorcycles have some advantages that bicycles don't. They have the ability to power out of some situations. They have noise. I mean, you hear a loud motorcycle, it makes you pay attention. Bicycle's totally quiet. You know, there's some differences here, but I think something that's more impactful about maybe creating awareness about, you need to do this for not only your child, but for yourself if you're gonna be riding a bicycle, no matter where you are, I think makes more sense.
Can I, can I just ask a couple, maybe, basic questions? How many additional ordinances does Fishers have that requires over and above what state law has on cars and motorcycles currently today?
It's not a question for you.
I don't have an exact number, but supplementing state law is pretty common. They kind of give you the leeway to do with your ordinances what you want to, to make it fit for your community. I'm just trying to think what I deal with on a daily basis, which are, you know, speeding violations, ordinance violations.
My answer was, I don't know.
Right, I mean, I...
I may second that answer.
Lindsey, and I appreciate the position you're in, right? Again, I'm not trying to legislate us into anything. I mean, again, I don't think this is gonna be impactful. I don't think it's gonna do anything that the community wants it to do. And being a person who formerly rode a bike, yes, I know I don't look like it, but I used to ride a lot of bike back then and I used to go out on the roads and I would never go on a road without a helmet and I would always go around with a bunch of guys so I could be seen better. There's a lot of common sense things here that have to occur and I think a bike awareness push by the city of Fishers through our communications department, who does a fabulous job of getting that stuff out, is far better than any legislation that we're gonna write that says, I can't follow three feet behind a bicycle, like I shouldn't know that already. I mean, again, I think we're going down a road here that I just think is untenable, really, in the grand scheme of really what the outcome we want to have come out of it. And you put in other ordinance on the books and we have another ordinance on the books the last time we talked about it, whereas if you do a full, you know, blown, you know, communication strategy on how to get people to understand that we've got 96,000 people on the road today, many of them cycle, many of them, right? And I'm pretty sure we can deliver a pretty drastic message out to the community on what is the right and the wrong thing to do without creating some other ordinance to do it.
So I would, I would be in favor, oh, go ahead, Selena, go ahead.
Are there any other communities around the state that you know that have gone above and beyond what the state has in bicycle enforcement laws?
Oh, yeah. Indy does, Carmel, Fort Wayne, I'm not sure if Noblesville does, but yeah, I mean, there's, we wouldn't be the only ones.
Chicago, New York.
I don't care about them.
Cities pushing for green, you're getting more conditions, cycling, pedestrian law and all this, and this is becoming a requirement because people don't give a damn.
All right, so, so I, you know, any other questions or comments? So, you know, I'll be in favor of this if we are making a commitment as a community to, to push awareness. If it's just gonna be buried in the books as another ordinance that we're just relying on officers just to, just to manage and we're not educating and awareness, then I, I feel like it's, there's no, I would agree more with Pete then, there's just no point in it. So, I mean, I know I can't force anybody to do that, but, but I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Todd, second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
So who was that? Four, five, all right. Nays?
Nay.
Nay. Three nays. Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to 071618B.
For the record, Lindsey Bennett, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here tonight on this ordinance to create, Chapter 53. So last council meeting, we asked you to repeal an ordinance that created a statutory stormwater board and give the authority of our stormwater utility to the Board of Public Works. This gave the Board of Public Works the authority to promulgate rules and regulations for the stormwater utility. So at the last board meeting, they did pass a stormwater resolution and stormwater construction details and specifications and right now those are housed in Chapter 153 and I thought this might be a little bit more useful, but it is tiny print, so you probably can't see it. Chapter 153 is right here, it's under land usage. We also have a section for Public Works and it houses our garbage trash, our sewer use and our water. So this ordinance would actually move stormwater...
Brad's got a laser, he might be able to help, you'll have a little laser pointer.
It would move stormwater up to Public Works.
Put that in my eye if I'm not paying attention.
So in this, Chapter 53, we would reference the new stormwater resolution and the new stormwater construction details and specifications. And as part of this creation of Chapter 53, we would also be creating penalties and those penalties would include fines as they're provided in Indiana code. That would be up to $2,500 for the first occurrence and then up to $7,500 for subsequent occurrences. The ability to institute stop work orders, the ability to enter onto private property to do any necessary work to ensure compliance and that's also allowed by Indiana code. Suspension of access to stormwater drain system. And we've also proposed an appeals process that would allow any person aggrieved by violation notice to appeal that violation with the Board of Public Works. The Board of Public Works could entertain that appeal and then make a decision to affirm, reject, or modify the notice of violation. I am also asking counsel to suspend the rules tonight and approve this on first, second, and third reading and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from counsel?
Motion to suspend.
Okay, motion by Pete to suspend, second? Second by Cecilia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay.
And if there's no comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by Cecilia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Moving on to 071618A.
Lindsey Bennett, again for the record, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here tonight for an ordinance that would create Section 71.18 of the city ordinances for school zone speeding violations. Currently, we have our, our school zone speeding violations housed in the same ordinance, 71.16, as our other speeding violations. That works fine. I do the enforcement with city court and it's been working fine, but the city did want to update the ordinance language in preparation for the school zone light flashers. So once they're installed, we'll have that, once they're installed and operational, we'll have this separate ordinance for that. So in doing that, we thought it might be prudent to create this new section so we can differentiate between the school zone and the other speeding violations for enforcement and penalty purposes. This is another one, I'm respectfully requesting counsel to suspend the rules and approve on first, second, and third reading and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
When are we gonna get the light one? Is it this year or the year of the COVID pandemic? And then with all schools and conditions? Those are the kinds of programmable and principal or at all?
I think they'll be set times more than likely and they'll be flashing when they're in use. I don't, I don't think they'll, I don't think they'll move every day type thing.
No, I, I know they're programmable, but...
Checking those, is one by the spell, programmable, engaged in the principle, you need to turn on or off whenever you want it.
Yeah, I, yeah, we'll find out.
I have said it on the Transportation Committee, but it's not something that's been discussed.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll look into that.
And are these always public schools or private? Because we've got same...
We only got a federal grant for public schools.
Okay. I just ask because I always get questions from the residents over here.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by Pete to suspend, second by Cecilia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Pete, second by John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to any other unfinished or new business?
We do have an additional agenda item.
Right, write that item.
Make a motion to add agenda item?
I got it.
You got it, John's got it. John's got it.
I'll make a motion to add an agenda item, the Resolution City Fishers approving a project in Real America LLC.
Right, motion.
I have a motion.
Second, second, motion by John, second by Pete, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right. Who's coming up? Oh, he's right there.
He's hiding.
You never know where he's at, Russ.
For the record, Brandon Dickinson, Director of Economic Development for the city of Fishers, bringing before the council a resolution approving a project agreement with Real America Development LLC. This is a project on Lantern Road. The area shown here is up against the interstate at Lantern Road and Appel Court in the South Village area. The project is basically a contingent economic development incentive. This group is presenting to the Indiana State Authority for Housing a workforce housing project and so what they've asked in order to get the maximum amount of points for consideration for that project as they can, for the city of Fishers to consider waiving 100,000 of their 300,000-plus road bridge impact fees. So the proposal here before you tonight would be to entertain that. Should they be selected by the state government, then their incentive would still require them to pay more than $200,000 in impact fees upon construction of the project. This would be for about 74 units surface parked. These are residential homes currently that are under contract. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
This also lies in a TIF area, doesn't it, Brandon?
Yes, this area is in a TIF area because it's residential housing. It passes through and isn't TIF captured, but because this is a multifamily project, it would be TIF eligible and would capture any TIF increment for the downtown consolidated TIF.
Okay.
The other clarification is, to their credit, Real America applied previously, so they tried to get the credits or obtain the credits on their own and I think this helps with that application, but unfortunately, they were not granted or approved at the last time, right?
That's correct, Counsel Block. They did apply, they didn't receive any city infrastructure or investment to go towards their points. They, they finished pretty, pretty high up, but did not make the cut and their hope is with this, with this fee impact waiver that that might give them just enough points to succeed and win that competitive process. This is their second time around.
Any other questions or comments from counsel?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Pete, second by John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Moving on, thank you very much. Moving on to community comment. If you have any comments regarding anything in Fishers, it doesn't have to be on this agenda, you're... agenda, you're welcome to step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, you will have three minutes to speak. I'll open the floor right now.
Matt Stoli, 11275 Wedge Field Court in Fishers. I was hoping to maybe read this during the comment at this point, you know, I think what I would like to do is take this opportunity and thank you, first of all, for the introduction and passage of the safe passing three-foot ordinance. This is near and dear to my heart as a, basically a advocate in the community. So, I felt compelled tonight to speak this evening, because being dressed up in cycling equipment, you know, it's, it's not, you know, just like being dressed up in cycling equipment, kinda like email, you know, it's a little bit anonymous. So, yes, I'm the person that's been emailing you, sending you the videos of the close calls and, that, that we have on the road now becoming weekly, as weekly occurrences. So, the idea of this request goes back 10 years ago, when I reached out to then the town council about adopting a cyclist's bill of rights, and this is similar to what Los Angeles was doing at the time. This was more of a conceptual conversation that we, you know, that we had with some folks back then, and as we go back and, and reflect on this, you know, since then, the population obviously has grown, you know, grown vastly, right? The popularity of triathlons and running and cycling have exploded within our community. So, today, I think a three-foot safe passing ordinance is probably, you know, more of a, you know, back then, it was maybe more of a luxury, now I think it's gonna be more of a necessity. And as great of an amenity as I think this, the new nickel plate trail's gonna be, that's gonna be a destination for folks. And families are gonna wanna make sure they get there safe, and automobiles are giving them a wide berth. So, you know, just as I think it's important to kinda personify this particular issue now in the meeting, I think it's also important for us to personify this within our community. You know, in a world of tight schedules and distracted driving, it's important for drivers on our roads to know that that's a person there that you're about to pass, okay? Not an anonymous cyclist that you don't recognize under the helmet or behind the sunglasses. So, it's somebody's parent, it's somebody's kid, it's somebody's grandparent, it's a neighbor, it's a community leader, it's a friend. And that's why I think that the community, the cycling community, the running community, this isn't just a cyclist's thing. This is, this is, is near and dear to our hearts. So, again, thank you, we hope that the passage of this three-foot ordinance will help protect our cyclists, our runners, our pedestrians, and we hope that this is, you know, the true intent here. May be tough to enforce now, and I think Chief Mitchell has said that in the past, but there is technology there. Indianapolis Police Department is using that technology for enforcement, so we're not that far behind. And I think what this really does for us now, as users and shares of the road, is this helps bring awareness to drivers. To Mayor Fadness's point, you know, no longer is the emails, "Why are these cyclists not riding on the sidewalk?" Okay, because they can't, right? That's illegal. So, I think this maybe helps bring more awareness and education to the, to the public. So, thank you again for, for those of you that supported.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to comment?
I brought show and tell.
Show and tell, that is great.
Please, for example, get out of the room.
Yep.
So, I have scars.
Go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
So, I'm Mark Wickline, 13237 Westwood Lane. Two years ago, this actually happened up in Noblesville, but this is in regards to the three-foot passing ordinance, and I get that a lot of this should be common sense to most people, but anybody that drives, well, really anywhere now realizes that people truly don't care when they're behind the wheel. They're more, they're more worried about their friggin' schedule, their impatience, their cellphone, so common sense doesn't apply anymore. I mean, the last time I came across 116th Street on one of my motorcycles, I was laying on the horn three times, cussing at people because they clearly didn't care. But you can see the pictures, and I, you know, like the gentleman behind me just pointed out, you know, my wife got that phone call, my daughter, who was five months pregnant with my grandson, got that phone call that I was being transported to St. Vincent Trauma One. You know, and let me put it in this perspective for you, and I know I can't get you guys to all go out here, but if you stand with your back to 116th Street, or even Lantern Road, put your back to traffic, do it on the sidewalk, on the curb, now step a foot and a half out in front of that traff- or out in that traffic lane, and you tell me, "What's a safe passing?" Yes, I know this is kind of a complicated ordinance, but it's a beginning, it's a start. Because the thing is, this is all I've got protecting me. I don't have steel, airbags, crumple zones, I got nothing. This body, as you can see, breaks, and that was a low, that was a low speed, you know, altercation. And unfortunately, under Indiana law, he got basically failure to yield and filed bankruptcy. You know, I've got a lifetime of scars. But anyways, so this is an important start, and I just want to point out, you know, Indiana enacted laws protecting construction workers because they see them, you know, they're, they're basically at, you know, they're, they're vulnerable to drivers. This is really no different. I mean, yes, cyclists have to be responsible, and I used to be that impatient driver, but as a cyclist now, I get it. I get why sometimes they take the lane, because as you're coming across 110, 126th Street or whatever, you know somebody's gonna try and squeeze in between you and the next vehicle, giving you no space at all. So, you know, you get clipped at the mirror, I have a friend that had an arm busted, cause he was running along the side of a road in Fishers, and friggin' SUV, he had to put his arm up to protect his head, his head from the mirror. And I'm, I'm telling you, this, and obviously, as you can see, I mean, I'm not gonna go into the whole PTSD thing, but anyways, this is a start. It is something to protect the cyclists in this community, and, I mean, the thing is, it's, there's just a lot to it, but this is something that's truly, truly needed. Fishers is a vibrant green community, it's trying to become more so, Carmel's growing that way. Somebody's gotta care, and somebody's gotta hold somebody accountable, at least say, "Hey, look, this is the standard that we hold you to in this community." It's vital, you know? Every one of you wants to go home, and that's what it is, you know? I don't want you to get that phone call like my wife got, and I know she sure as hell wouldn't wish that on anybody. So, anyways, I'll leave it at that, before I really go crazy, so.
Thank you very much, I'm glad you're recovered, and that looks pretty traumatic, so, but...
Oh, it's, it's all good.
Yeah. I'm sure you do.
Well, maybe these two, maybe these two gentlemen would be willing to be a part of that awareness campaign.
Yeah. That'd be something that maybe staff can reach out and-
If you're still there, I would love to hear your thoughts and views, actually, if you had any-
Yeah, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? State, yes, go ahead.
Brian Locke, 8464 East 126th Street in Fishers. I go to the same gym as this guy, so I watched the rehab for a year and a half, and, and I saw the pictures that night on Facebook, or the next day on Facebook, and-
We're going to the news, I was-
Yeah. You know, I, I think of this as more of a, a public safety than, than anything else. I mean, this, I don't believe this is necessarily a cycling matter. I'm a cyclist, I ride about 1,000 miles a month on these roads around here, and no less than five or six times a week, I find myself in the, in the grass. I try to get out, Cynthia Ann, as far as I can get out of the, quickly as I can, out of the city. I was a friend of Robert Lackey, a Bob who was killed just a couple of weeks ago, and he was just riding home on, on his ride. And I really feel for the lady who struck him. I mean, I, I wouldn't wish that on anyone, just as much as I wouldn't wish what ended Robert's life. So, I was traveling in Washington DC and New York when that happened, and I got the email message, and I was riding my bike in both of those cities, and I felt more safe there than here. And so, when I came home, two days after I came home, on the 10th, I went to Brook School Road, just south of 126th Street, and across the entrance from the school there, there's a little gravel area on, on the east side of the road, and I backed my car in, and it's about 200 feet from where Robert was killed. And I had a tally counter in one hand, and a tally counter in the other hand, and I counted cars for 30 minutes. And I counted 219, 216 cars, and going both ways, it's a two-way street, in, in 30 minutes. 39 of them were on their phone. And so, I had a little, set a little rule for myself, I had to see someone on their phone. If they were just looking down, I have no idea what's going on. I needed to see the phone. And 39 folks were on the phone. So, that's about every 50 seconds, there's someone driving in front of the school, two-lane road, not paying attention to what they're doing. The next day, I went on 126th Street, just east of 1, Brook School, there's a little maintenance area there by the golf course, to let them know what I was doing, and I sat there and I counted, but I can only count cars going one way, cause it's a four-lane road, and get it's pretty, pretty busy. So, for 30 minutes, I did the same thing. 499 cars, 197 were on their phone. That's every 15 seconds. And in that time, I counted about a dozen or so riders, but since I wasn't counting riders, I only had two counters, and, and it was about a dozen or so riders. And so, I, I picked up the phone, and I called my friend out in DC, who they've got a number of ordinance out there, and I'm like, "What have you faced with this?" Obviously, a white line on a road or something is not necessarily gonna keep that car from coming over and hitting me. It's just not gonna do it. It's, it's more of the human condition than anything else. But he said, "That ordinance has helped, it's a, it was a start, that's simply all that it was." The same thing in New York, same thing in Delaware, same thing, you know, Carmel, wherever we wanna be, it's simply a start. I would love for people to understand, hey, don't follow too close to a, a fire engine or any type of emergency vehicle, but I see it every day. It's simply just a start. We gotta start from somewhere. And if, if it hits three feet, and someone can remember that, and we do our work as citizens in spreading that word and educating people, I'm in a number of cycling communities, as is Matt, and man, we take this on completely. Not just for the cyclists, but anyone on the road. Maybe it's someone that's walking to work, maybe it's someone that's walking their dog, maybe they're crossing, whatever it is, it's just more awareness about, hey, this is a growing community, and there's more pedestrians out here. People are moving on the road, we're walking around.
Thank you very much.
We're just enjoying what's going on here, and we're trying to attract that here. Let's just have some things to finish that.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chris Chrissy, 11508 Charleston Parkway, and I'd like to thank Mr. George, he met with me and addressed some of my thoughts and concerns. So, I'm an avid bicyclist and an outdoors person. My thoughts are more about the over, what I feel, the overdevelopment of Fishers, and I live in this, this neck of the woods here, so this is all my backyard that you're basically shoving everything you can, pretty much down our throat. So, my thoughts are, and I spoke with four neighbors before I came over, just happened to bump into them, and they kinda share my feelings. So, I'll just share a little story with you. I had a little tree, I thought it was a really cool tree, and I wanted it to be really neat and grow and be a really cool-looking tree. So, I watered it, and I mean, I watered the hell out of it, saturated it, and guess what? I killed that tree, cause I overwatered it. And that's what I feel like is happening in Fishers, is this development you guys are doing is just, you've got, you know, too much of anything is not good. So, I had a dream, you know, I've lived here 17 years, and this was kinda my dream town, and it's going by the wayside. Safety, ease of movement, green space, it's all gone. I, I only think I'm gonna be looking forward to is a little sliver down the, the middle of the road with some trees and flowers is gonna be the only green space left. So, you, I'm upset, and I'm kind of heartbroken that it's kinda got to this point, and I'd like to understand how it did, and, and that you folks actually care about the people out there, cause, boy, I'm telling you, what I hear, people aren't happy, they're not happy with Fishers. They're very upset, they're thinking it's overdone. I mean, we, it's good to be healthy, vibrant, progressive, growing, but there's a moderation, there's a balance, and I think the mayor used the terms, a balance of, of sides, and I don't see that. I don't see that, I hear a lot of upset people. So, I just would like to say that, you know, I would like to see that the councilman cares, the mayor cares, they're taking input from the citizens and go, going, "Hey, is everybody happy with all this development?" I mean, I'm, I don't see the, the bright side for me, I don't see the plus. I mean, it's so congested over there, it's, it's a nightmare, and we've got the fiber-optic cable going in as well, you got people watering flowers, now, I mean, it's, it's a true nightmare. So, I mean, if somebody's dream city is a lot of concrete, you know, asphalt, buildings, people stacked up on each, on top of each other, LA might be one of the best cities to live too. That's not why I moved to Fishers. And I, and I grew up in Carmel in the 70s and 80s, and I know the, how that growth factor works, so, and that's a lot of Fishers and Westfield's growth, is people from Carmel got tired of that overgrowth and started bushing outward. So, I, I guess my thoughts are, I appreciate you hearing my voice, and Mr. George meeting with me, but I, I would like to see the council and the mayor get more concerned in citizens' input on what their true feelings are about overdeveloping this area.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name's Justin Mertner, address is 14096 North Cove Place. Just wanna thank you, council members who voted in support of the Bicycle Safety Act. For those of you who didn't, I really strongly can, ask you to reconsider your position. I don't have the stories that the gentleman behind me that shared have, I have my experience. I have two things I wanna do when I go to ride. I wanna come home safely to my four kids and my wife, and I wanna enjoy myself, get some exercise. I can't run, you know, I can't do the physical activities I grew up doing in the Fishers, Carmel, Noblesville community. Cycling is my avenue to be healthy. I have an absolute right to be protected from a motorist in a pickup truck trying to buzz me. Absolute right. And I'm happy that we've made that decision here. It is an education that we have to provide to our community. It's not just Fishers, it's Noblesville, it's Westfield, it's the communities that we all ride in, but it starts in Fishers. And I think taking the approach that Carmel did, I think, five years ago, and passing that same ordinance is beneficial. So, just wanna thank you again for giving us that ability to be a little safer. As a cycling community, we do have to step up and provide that insight. A "Share the Road" sign is not enough. We have to be active in the community and sharing our insight, and, you know, our passion with other people, and getting others involved as well. And I think that's where you get a lot of respect. As a driver, if I'm involved in the cycling community, I can appreciate and give you extra time. I know myself when I'm driving, I don't give the cyclist three feet, he gets five, and everybody below me, behind me is gonna slow down. I want him to go home at night. I don't want the gentleman behind me to have the same accident that he had two years ago. It's absolutely uncalled for. So, disappointing those of you who believe that we can just leave the ordinances on the books as they are, absolutely uncalled for. And thank you to those five of you who voted in support of the ordinance, and appreciate and respect your citizens of Fishers. I know we appreciate your voice, and appreciate that you guys are willing to stand up for us against your counterparts, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Ryan Post, 7503 Hickory Woods Drive South. I moved here about a year ago, I formerly lived in West Virginia. West Virginia roads are way more scary than these roads. 10-foot wide lanes, coal trucks, loud coal trucks that have no problem downshifting and being as loud as possible as they pass you three foot away, or less. Edge of shoulder, there's no such thing. The coal trucks also destroy the entire side of the road, there's no shoulder, so the coal trucks are actually riding on the edge of the asphalt, which totally destroys it. So, usually, three foot or so is completely unridable, but you don't dare ride in the middle of the road, cause they own the road. I then moved to New York, lived there for two years, riding was amazing there in western New York. Then moved to Pittsburgh, riding is, Pittsburgh's considered a gold, League of American Cyclists calls it like a gold level or platinum level, highest level of bicycling. It's really not that great. They've got bike lanes that are basically useless, they're dual, dual-directional, they're about four foot wide, two bikes can't pass each other at speed, four-foot lane. So, riding here is, I don't know, it's somewhere in the middle there. I appreciate the three-foot passing lane, that's great. My concern is with this, the added restriction that was applied with this, or almost applied to this, and also with the previous ordinance, I think, occurred with e-bikes, small motorcycles, the registration required for them. I went on the website, trying to understand, like, how do I do the registration? I couldn't figure it out, like, I put half hour in to try and figure it out. I have a motorcycle license, but I couldn't tell if I could even ride an e-bike, or a 50cc or less motorized vehicle. So, I'm just concerned about the trend, it appears to be, that you're restricting a lot of alternate transportation, and I think this is a developing city and, and those kinda things, I don't, I don't see a lot of busing and, and those kind of other things. So, I'm concerned that we kinda stop trending towards that, defeating those things. The, the other thing is, I know a couple of you passed the ordinance under the constraint that we would have more public knowledge of bicycles belonging on the road, and I definitely think that's an important thing. League of-